Well, good morning, everyone. We'd like to thank you for being here this morning. We have a meeting here at the end of the month, which is a little bit abnormal. We don't normally have meetings the last Wednesday of the month, but we are this month, so thank you for being a part of our meeting today. We have a very simple, straightforward meeting, not a whole lot going on here. It's a fairly short agenda. We are going to get to hear from our election commissioner. We have a zone change, a code change relating to wireless communications. And we're going to insert an off-agenda item just before the consent agenda relating to the zoo and its cereal malt beverage considerations. So that's the plan for today. And with that, I'd like to ask for first item, please.
invocation to be led by Pastor Brian Dunham, Pathway Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let's bow our heads and pray together. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you this morning and just grateful for the commission and those that serve our community, Lord, and the efforts that they give. May they be found diligent for the responsibilities that you've given them, and may you give them wisdom as they do that. Lord, we specifically think of some of the families that are hurting our community as a result of some of the flooding and just the difficulties there, God. So we just pray that you would bring comfort, but also you'd bring wisdom in how we can make coordinated efforts to ease that suffering. Lord, also just lift up our law enforcement, just so grateful that they serve and protect. And so, Lord, we pray that in turn you would protect them and give them tact as they serve our community. And, Lord, specifically rejoicing this morning, just with all the students around our community this morning who are coming together for see you at the poll and being unified in their faith in you, Christ. And so, Lord, we just rejoice in that and thank you for those young people. Lord, we pray that you would now guide and direct this meeting, that you would bring wisdom and direction with the discussion, the decisions that are made. We pray this all in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Dunham, thank you for the prayer this morning. And I'd like to recognize Commissioner Peter John.
Yes, well, thank you, Brian. Appreciate you coming out this morning. And Pathway Church, I've had the privilege, my family's had the privilege of attending services out there for many years, and it's a wonderful place. Thank you for being with us this morning.
Thanks for having me. Also, like I say, I think that's the church for our friend, Bill Meek, that just passed away this last year. So it's a great church in our community. Thank you for all you do there, Pastor.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'd like to go and call the meeting, the regular business meeting, to order for the Board of County Commissioners for the date of September 28, 2016. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Rule call. Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Commissioner Ransaw.
Present.
Chairman Howell.
Present.
Next item, please.
Public information announcements.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Katara Austin filling in for Kate Flavin, who is at ICMA this week. Have a couple things to share with you this morning. First, I'll call Election Commissioner Tabitha Lehman out to talk about the general election that's upcoming.
Well, in case all of you are living under a rock, I thought I'd remind you that we are 41 days out from a presidential election. Of course, we are at our busiest time right now, getting all geared up for that. Our registration numbers have began increasing, and we are still needing election workers. We are facing having more cancellations come in right now than we're getting applications. So we are madly trying to find more people. We have reached out to both political parties and requested their help and reminded them of their statutory responsibility to assign poll workers for us. We're hoping that will get us some names. But we did want to do another plug, just let everybody know that we are in need. We have several polling locations that we have more than five openings at right now, and that is very concerning to me. So we have exhausted our normal list of election workers. I think at this point, our options left are to start doing targeted mailings to those areas, to the political parties of people that we need who have a habit of voting. But that is, of course, an expense that we would rather not spend if we can get them otherwise. So we would just like to, once again, request people to work the polls. We did send out an email to all of our currently assigned board workers and asked them if they had any friends or families and members who were willing to work, and ended up getting 12 responses canceling from that email, so that was not very helpful. So we would just like to, obviously, encourage people to work the polls. It's very necessary. But then we would also like to remind you of your early voting options. Our office is actually extending the hours that we are open this year. We are opening two days earlier than we ever have before. We are going to be open from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. every business day in our office, and then we will be open 9:00 to 4:00 the Saturday before the election, as well as the Monday morning before. So we are trying to give people as many options to vote early, and that is in addition to our normal 15 early voting locations that we have throughout the county. So just a reminder that we have those needs for election workers, but also just remind people that they don't need to wait till election day to vote. We do have an advance by mail flyer that is en route to most people, has not been delivered yet, apparently. So we have a few people who've received it, but we are still waiting for people to respond to that, to do balloting by mail, but we just want to remind people of their options for this election.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Lehman. There may be some questions and comments from Commissioners. I'll recognize Commissioner Peter John first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have to be a Republican or a Democrat to be an election worker?
No, you can be Libertarian unaffiliated. We need everybody.
Okay, so we don't have to restrict our pool in that regard, so...
No, we do strive...
And we have a lot of folks who are unaffiliated, as I understand it, who would be... All you have to do, do you have to be a registered voter?
You do have to be a registered voter in Sedgwick County. If you're a registered voter in another county, I'm sure they also need election workers, and you can volunteer there. But you, we can have one-third of our boards be 16- and 17-year-old students. They have to be qualified to be registered to vote, but other than that age. So we will take just about anybody.
Oh, really? So they do not have to be 18 years of age by November 8th to be able to be an election worker?
That is correct.
Is there compensation involved if you are an election worker? And if so, how much?
Yes, we pay $7.15 an hour, and it's about a 16-hour day for a presidential election. So it comes out to about $120 a day. So it's not a lot, but we would like to appeal to people's civic pride and civic duty, because it is something that we really need to have happen, so...
Let me ask you this. If you're willing to work, do you have to work in your precinct, or can you work anywhere in the county?
We prefer to place you in your precinct. That is, it's kind of state statute that we have to try that first. If your precinct is full, we can appoint you somewhere else in the county, so...
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lehman, just curiously, how many positions would you fill if you had plenty of people stepped up that wanted to do this? How many could you hire?
We are shooting for close to 1,000, because we're expecting, obviously, high turnout, and then our registration numbers are just continuing to increase.
And how many open positions do you have right now out of that 1,000?
About 250.
About 250?
Mm-hmm.
So it's easy... And usually after every election, there's usually comments about how things went, you know, whether the lines were long or whatever the comments might be. And I guess one thing we can do right now is ask people to get involved and sign up to help. They do get paid, and having those 250 positions filled is really important. So I hope that that works out. And are you on social media right now, trying to...
We are, and the county is helping with that as well, constantly posting things for us, and we do get some response from that. But, you know, of course, the audience that we're reaching, each person that posts it has their own friends or their own followers, and so we're kind of reposting to the same people, I think, at this point. We have gotten some media attention. Channel 3 ran a story yesterday for us, and I believe it was on some radio stations this morning as well. Some of my staff heard it this morning. So we are getting some help from that, and we appreciate that sincerely, because that's free to us. So that's the best way for us to recruit is through media and social media, so...
On the Facebook posts, if people just, if they don't want to respond personally, at least if they would just share that, maybe take some of their friends, it would help spread the word a little bit.
Absolutely.
A way to help a little bit there, so... Well, it's an interesting problem to have, to have 250 positions open here 41 days before the election, so that's...
Talking to other counties, I'm not, this is not unique to us. I think it's just the tone of this election, probably.
All right. Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? All right, seen none. Well, thank you for your information.
Thank you, Commissioner Lehman. The other thing I would like to remind Commissioners and others about is we have a groundbreaking ceremony coming up Monday, October 3rd. This is going to take place at 5055 South Oliver. That's about a third mile south of 47th and Oliver, and this is for a Cedric County Emergency Medical Service post. It will be post 16, and it will help our county to better serve the citizens. And again, that's at 3:00 p.m. on Monday, so if you are so inclined, I know Chairman and EMS Director Scott Hadley will both be saying a few words at this event, 3:00 p.m. Monday, 5055 South Oliver.
And for me, this is exciting, because this is also in District 5. And we built Station, Fire Station 36 not too many years ago, and this is going to be right next to that. So it's going to be a great facility and a tremendous location, close to Spirit Aerosystems and close to the Oaklawn Community and close to Derby. And so I think it's a great enhancement for this community to have, especially right there in that spot. So I'm looking forward to Monday, Monday at 3:00 p.m.
3:00 p.m.
All right, thank you so much. Anything else?
Nothing else from me, Commissioner.
All right, thank you so much for being here this morning. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
All right, do we have anybody signed up to speak this morning on the roster? It looks like we don't have anybody signed up to speak. Is anybody in the audience that would like to speak generally to the Commissioner this morning, to the Commissioners this morning? Okay, seen none. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, special meeting minutes of August 4, 2016.
All right. And before we go forward, let me just say, I messed up just now. I should have recognized. We do have one elected here in our audience, so I'd like to recognize and welcome Marcy Gregory, the mayor of Goddard. Thank you for being here this morning.
My pleasure.
All right, so we're on Item A, minutes. Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no problem with it, I move we consider the minutes for August 4th, August 10th, and August 24th, and approve those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, seen none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransaw.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
All right, next item, please.
Planning Department. Item D, zone change from single-family residential to limited commercial on property located on the south side of East 21st Street North and west of North 159th Street East, District 1.
Dale Miller, planning staff. This is a case type that you have not seen before, primarily because for the last, well, since the '70s anyway, the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission has had a policy that whenever there was a request for a zone change on property that was unplatted, and they approved the zone change request, that part of the, one of the conditions of approval was that the property be platted within one year. The policy had provisions to allow for time extensions so that if something happened and the applicant couldn't complete it, they could then get extensions and ultimately perfect their zoning. Well, in the last few months, the Planning Commission, at the request of Wichita Area Builders Association and some of the other individual builders, asked that that policy be reviewed in the light of eliminating it, because with the changing economic climate, it was taking longer and longer for them to market properties and to bring them online to actually file for a building permit. And so they were having to deal with requesting for extensions. And the other problem they had was that the zoning map, since it's not being changed until it's platted, they would be marketing the property to someone, tell them, for example, that it's zoned LC, but the zone change was from single-family to LC. That person would then look at the map, and it would still be SF5, single-family. And so then the builder would have to explain, "Well, I've got it approved. I just haven't perfected it." So it complicated their ability to make deals. Planning Commission listened to these arguments and voted to rescind that requirement. So the last few months, whenever there have been county plats coming before you to, or zone changes for you to review, we have not included the requirement to have the plating done within one year. What we have today is someone who had a zone change that was approved back in 2008, where that requirement for plating still stands. They have not platted, and they would like to eliminate the requirement for their property to be platted. The specific activity, the specific site is here, located approximately a quarter-mile west of 159th on the south side of 21st. It's the area where the arrow is pointing. It is zoned SF20, but has been approved for LC, limited commercial zoning. As you can see here from the map, the property to the north is SF5, single-family. The property to the east and south is also SF5, but then here to the west, that property is still in the county and zoned SF20. And there's the aerial as it looks today. It's got a single-family home on it with a large workshop. And so staff is asking for you to approve this request, to eliminate the requirement for plating, and allow the zoning resolution to be published, and let them move on down the road with their zoning. With that, I try and answer questions.
All right. Director Miller, thank you for the explanation. I don't have any questions at this time. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions you'd like to raise this morning? Let me go to the audience. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come and ask a question or make a comment regarding this agenda item? All right, seen none. Bringing it back to the board. Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we take the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? All right, seen none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransaw.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item, please.
New business. Item E, a resolution to amend Chapter 22, Article 2 of the Sedgwick County Code regarding utility permits to comply with new state legislation regarding wireless telecommunications.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Just to explain a little bit on this, earlier this year, the Kansas Legislature approved a bill codified now as KSA 66 2019, which becomes effective on October 1st this year. It requires municipalities to allow wireless telecommunications structures to be located within the public right-of-way. And when I say the public right-of-way, what I really mean by that, that's the property that would be alongside a road that's typically, you know, a ditch, an area where grass, vegetation, utility lines, perhaps underground utility as well, might be located. The stated intent of the legislation is to increase the amount of broadband that's available to people in the public. The resolution that's in front of you today is intended to do two different things. First is to make changes to the county code provisions to meet up to the requirements of that new state statute. And then, secondly, to put in place reasonable provisions regarding public health, safety, and welfare, as the legislation does authorize municipalities to do that. Historically, the county has not allowed wireless structures to be located in the public right-of-way. And wireless telecommunications structures have instead been located on private property, where they've rented the property or purchased property and located their structures there. So this would be a pretty substantial change in terms of how the county has handled these items. The zoning code that's in place within Wichita and Sedgwick County does not actually address the use of public right-of-way. So it is important to note that zoning does not apply to what's in front of you today on this. This is something that's within the purview of the county engineer. Since 1982, Sedgwick County Public Works has had a standard approach that's been used for any public utilities that locate in the public right-of-way. Really, this involves a permit, utility permit agreement, and that's entered into. And the new state legislation essentially requires municipalities to treat wireless telecommunications in a similar manner, and certainly not in a less favorable manner than other public utilities. There's a wide variety of structures that you might see in this, just to kind of explain. You could have anything from 120-foot monopole towers, where there's just a one single tower with a cell facility on the top of it, to, in some cases, small and somewhat innocuous devices that will be put on the top of telephone or electrical poles. So there's a pretty broad range of what the legislation covers and what this requires to be allowed in the public right-of-way. I'll give a brief description of what the resolution includes. Just to explain, engineers within Public Works, on a daily basis, they deal with considerations about what makes sense in terms of public health, safety, and welfare. So they truly are subject matter experts in this area. The intent of this resolution is to bring wireless telecommunications structures under the umbrella of what Public Works already does in dealing with utility, public utilities located in the right-of-way, and considering their placement in those matters. The resolution would require that the wireless telecommunications company, just like any other public utilities, submit that agreement and meet up to certain minimum standards that would be put in place. I'll give a brief description of those. You know, these are, this is not a comprehensive slash exclusive listing, but they can't be located within 15 feet of the paved surface of the roadway. They could not be located within the clear zone of the roadside design guide. And then also, they would need to follow the manual on uniform traffic control devices that's published by the United States Department of Transportation. These are all policies that are, I think, used routinely in locating public utilities within the right-of-way. And when a wireless telecommunications company would come in to locate one of these, just like anyone else locating the public right-of-way, they would need to submit some detailed plans. And Public Works staff goes through a review of those plans, and so the idea would be to treat these in a similar manner to how we've treated public utilities for a long time. In the case of any denial, if the Public Works did deny one of these due to public health, safety, or welfare, they are required to actually indicate in writing why they're denying that, and that's included in the resolution as well. There are also timeframes established within the statute in which an approval or denial must be made. Those are included in the resolution as well. There's also a listing of, at one place, there's 18 essentially things that we can't ask for in the permitting process according to the legislation. I call them the "don'ts," and we've avoided all of those "don'ts" that the legislation provides in the resolution that's in front of you. Also, another thing that's being proposed to be changed is there's a fee for utility and highway permits that's currently set, and it was set in 1982, at $65. The resolution that's in front of you would propose increasing that fee to $150. The rationale is to cover the county's cost of reviewing and processing these. The, as I understand it, there's Public Works staffsmen's a certain amount of time on reviewing these, including a significant review by engineers within Public Works. And I know that Jim Weber is here from Public Works, and he'd be happy to address any questions you might have on that. Also, there's an Exhibit C that proposes increased bond amounts on this. Again, that was something, the bond amounts that you'll see on the current resolution were put in place in 1982 and have not been modified. Those bonds are in place for when public utilities are being constructed. If, for example, they were to leave the property with damage in the public right-of-way, it was not repaired, to where Public Works may have to go in and do it to make the property back to how it was before, the bond could essentially be called. It also gives the option of contractors having a standing bond in place, which I understand a lot of contractors already have that. The recommended action on this item is to approve the resolution. Since the statute becomes effective on October 1st, because it's advisable to have provisions in place on this before the statute actually becomes effective, I would advise that you approve this or a modified version of what's in front of you today, and I would be happy to stand for any questions on it.
All right. Well, thank you for the explanation. And Commissioners, any questions or comments at this time? All right, I'll bring it to the audience. Anybody in the audience would like to comment or make, ask a question regarding the agenda item this morning? All right, seen none. Bringing it back to the board. I would just say, there are some fees addressed in the resolution. Is that the same as, have we charged this before for other types of, is this the first time we've ever done this?
This is not the first time we've done this. We've had a fee in place for any utility or highway permits. It's been $65 since 1982. What's new is we've never, we've never allowed wireless telecommunications facilities to be built in the right-of-way before, but it'd have the same fee as all other utility permits.
Very good. I have a question or comment from Commissioner Peter John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Justin, if you can kind of go walk through a little bit, when you say wireless communications, which seems kind of a paradox that they need public right-of-way to be able to have wireless communications. How would this be different from, say, a traditional, whether it's an electrical or phone company telephone pole?
I guess the first thing is, in some cases, like I mentioned, the 120-foot tower's going to be a lot taller. I mean, it's just a lot taller than the standard utility pole is. And you were talking about the, when you ask how it's different, I guess I'd ask for some clarification. What do you, what do you mean, how it'd be different?
Well, I mean, that was my point, in terms of we'd be allowing larger, larger poles than we've had in the past. I think that's important for the public. We've had some interesting and sometimes somewhat contentious zoning cases when you have large structures being proposed for placing in the community. And that's a point I'd like to try and get out, and even though we don't have a lot of people attending our meeting this morning, I think it is an important point for the public going forward.
Yes, and it is a point worth noting that the legislation really doesn't give, as I noted, our zoning code does not apply to the public right-of-way. So when a permit is pulled under this, it's not going to go to the Planning Commission for approval or review. It will go to Public Works directly. The legislation does not really provide, and I think it really eliminates the ability for municipalities to review these in a similar context to zoning for aesthetics and things along those lines. There is a very limited process where a municipality could put in place provisions regarding the appearance or materials of these, but they have to be reasonable. The reality is, we don't really have much, there's not like an accepted standard way of aesthetics for these items, and all it really, all it allows is that you can receive input from an adjoining property owner as to the aesthetics. It doesn't require a public hearing. We have not included that in the resolution, because the reality is, there, I don't, in talking with Public Works staff, I don't know that there is an accepted aesthetics item on this. They're going to review these for public health, safety, and welfare, and that's really what the statute focuses on in terms of what, as a municipality, you can regulate on this, so...
Okay. Well, let me shift just a little bit. If we were to take a road, and it's a two-lane road, we decide to widen it to three or four lanes, talk a little bit about how that impacts the easements and how would, how these rules might, what would happen if we did do a road widening?
Sure, and that's a good question. We actually already have that addressed some in our utility permit agreements. We've had that situation come up before. If there were a road widening to where, let's say you already had one of these towers in place, and where it was initially located, it was safe, but if we widened a road from two lanes to four lanes, it would no longer be safe. Part of the utility permit agreement, and something that's actually allowed by statute on this, is that we can require, and we have that in the resolution, that the utility would be responsible for any relocation of that, if it became a public health, safety, and welfare concern for us.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding, has Wichita taken up this issue, do you know?
Well, there's a couple of different things to it. One is, as I understand it, they're, in talking with their council, they already have procedures and provisions in place on this that they think address this. I can't say that I'm very familiar with what those are. They have franchising authority, the cities do, that counties don't have by statute. And so the city of Wichita may have a very fleshed-out franchise agreement. I can't say that I'm aware as to what all that includes. The second piece of that is the Planning Commission, actually on tomorrow, is going to be taking up some proposed amendments to the zoning code, which I think are more minor in scope than what's in front of you today, because some of the provisions of that statute also apply to private property and zoning considerations. So there is going to be a change coming through, and the change is intended at this point to be uniform in county and city, to make the zoning code compliant with the new statute.
All right. The reason I bring that up is I just visited a large city list last week, and there were cell towers everywhere. And so it's just one of those things where I think that when people are familiar not seeing these towers right now around the community, they're going to start seeing them pop up pretty quickly, I would expect. So it'll be a change for this community, and it's driven by state law, which is fine. We, I think we need to comply, and so obviously I'm supportive of the resolution this morning. Any other comments or questions before we, before we move on here? All right. Commissioners, what's the will of the board? Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and sign the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I need to go ahead and, I'd like to insert an off agenda item into the agenda, so I'm going to make a motion. We take up an item. It's a resolution temporarily suspending the cereal malt beverage license for Sedgwick County Zoological Society. And I'd like to recognize, oh, actually, we need to vote on that. So I make that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Karen Powell to explain.
Karen Powell, Deputy County Counselor. First of all, I'd like to apologize on behalf of the zoo for the late notice on this. I was contacted late last week in regard to an event that they're having. It's actually this Friday, and they want to have something other than cereal malt beverage on the premises. So this item is similar to what we have done for the Zoo Bally event in that it suspends the cereal malt beverage license that the zoo holds for serving that CMB for one day so that they can have something other than cereal malt beverage on the premises. And, you know, the liquor laws in Kansas are a bit complex. If you're licensed for cereal malt beverage, you can only have that particular strength of alcohol on the premises. You cannot have anything else. So it came to the attention of the zoo organizers, and they did not want to get the zoo in, you know, a problem, into a problem with the alcohol beverage control arm of the state, as well as the vendors that are going to be there. There are going to be various vendors, I believe they said six to seven vendors, for the Beasley Beers Craft Edition event. So my recommendation would be to adopt this resolution, which will suspend their cereal malt beverage license for only one day, this Friday, for that Beasley Beers event.
All right, very good. I will go ahead and ask, is there anybody in the audience would like to speak to the agenda item? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, then what's the will of the board?
I move we take the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're back on the published agenda, and Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office. You have before you today items F through L. If there are no questions or concerns, we would request that you accept and approve the consent.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and recess the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and call to order the governing body of the Fire District Number One for the date of September 28, 2016. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Commissioner Ransah.
Present.
Chairman Howell.
Present.
All right, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Is anybody here in the audience would like to speak regarding the Fire District Number One this morning? I don't believe anybody signed up, and I don't believe there's anybody here that wants to speak, it looks like, so I'm going to go ahead and, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular fire meeting minutes of July 20, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minute for July 20, 2016, July 27, August 4, August 10, and August 24.
All right. We have a motion to adopt the minutes for items A through E for the dates that were just listed by Commissioner Ransah. I'd like to second that motion. Any final discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
Commissioners, anything else on the Fire District before we move on to the, back to the regular meeting? Mr. Manager, anything on the Fire District? All right. At this time, then I would go ahead and adjourn the district, I'm sorry, adjourn the meeting of the governing body of Fire District Number One and call back to order the regular business meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Next item, please, ma'am. Madam Clerk.
Legislative issues.
All right. Commissioners, anything for legislative issues this morning? All right. Counselor, nothing from legislative issues this morning? All right, thank you. All right, next item, please.
Other.
All right. Commissioners, any comments for other this morning? Commissioner Peter John.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to point out that, and kind of something that I used to do regularly during my first term as a county commissioner, about giving a report in terms of the number of folks in the sheriff's custody in the Sedgwick County Jail. 1,534 folks today, and I mention it because it's a bit of a challenge going forward with the fact that a large number, I'd say somewhere between 100 and 150 are convicted felons who are serving their sentences in the Sedgwick County Jail and not in the Kansas Department of Corrections. But it is a number that I know people continue to work on, and the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council is doing good work in that area. Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to point out the fact that another challenge this community faces, I'll be participating later today, the number of refugees coming into the community. There's a meeting this afternoon on that, and I do plan to participate. And that's a continuing challenge, I think, going forward. I thought it was interesting in light of some of the reports in terms of some of the enrollment figures on the school, for the public schools out there. I'd also be remiss, Mr. Chairman, if I didn't point out that September 28 is an important day in American history on some points that often don't get the attention they deserve. But on September 28, 1924, and this is important for anyone concerned about aviation, two U.S. Army aircraft planes landed in Seattle after completing the first aerial circumnavigation of the world. This is several years before Lucky Lindbergh flew across the Atlantic, and that's an event that got an awful lot of attention at that time. But this circumnavigation, the first high aircraft, took 175 days and had 57 stops, but was certainly an important event as aviation came forward. I'd also be remiss if I didn't point out on this date, in 1942, the only Medal of Honor that was awarded to a member of the United States Coast Guard occurred, and this was a signalman first class, Albert Monroe, who sacrificed himself in saving the lives of over 500 U.S. Marines at the Battle of Guadalcanal. And so it was awarded posthumously. And for folks who, and I have a family member who's currently serving in the Coast Guard, this is a significant, but one that I don't think gets very much attention concerning a Medal of Honor winner for the United States, a former member, posthumously awarded to a member of the United States Coast Guard. Mr. Chairman, thank you for letting me put that, provide that this morning.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Peter John. Commissioner Norton?
I won't take a long time on this issue, but I wanted to address it a little bit. Just recently, we've had some very, very heavy rains, particularly south of Kellogg that affected us from county line to county line on the south side. I think we're going to have to have some kind of a conversation soon about drainage projects and drainage infrastructure as we move forward. I think we saw with the rains that we had, where we had issues with some of the infrastructure that needs to be taken care of. And I don't know how we do that. Maybe it's the staff meeting. We really dig into the stormwater management program that we have, look at some of the recommendations, but start that conversation. I understand that it will have to make some tough decisions, and it may cost some money, but I don't think we can any longer sit on our hands and not consider drainage and stormwater management as anything but infrastructure and deal with it no differently we do than we do roads and bridges. In fact, in many cases, if you don't have the drainage right, you're tearing up roads, particularly township and arterial roads that need help and move a lot of people in the rural areas. So we don't have to have that conversation today, but at some point, I'd like to challenge the manager and staff to start helping us think through that whole process of how we put some money into drainage projects that need to be done and start checking off some of the recommendations that our Stormwater Advisory Board has done. Really tough work for a number of years, but it's another report that kind of sits on a shelf and hadn't had any attention. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Norton. Those are very good comments. In fact, I'd like to echo your comments. I've been digging into this more in the last several months because of the events that's caused me to understand, I think, more deeply what's really going on. And there is a lot of things that can be done, but obviously, our challenge is going to be how to get those things accomplished in light of the large price tag attached to most of the things that need to be done. So it's certainly a challenge. I'd like to recognize the townships on the south. They've done as good a job as they possibly can do. These are nearly volunteer positions or volunteer positions, and some of these folks have spent untold hours managing hundreds of phone calls, trying to figure out how to solve some of the problems within the townships. And they're at the end of the money. They've got roughly a third to a fourth of the year left to go still before they have any additional revenues available. So they're really in dire straits right now, and I'm trying to find ways to help them manage some of the challenges they've got. Infrastructure is doing as good as it can. Our storm, our stream maintenance folks have done a good job, but I think that's an area we might need to reconsider restoring some positions that have been gone for quite a while. And it is a situation I wasn't really fully aware of until I attended the Stormwater Advisory Board meeting and found that out, that we've actually reduced staff. And there's things we probably could do if we had more staff that would maybe help us somewhat. So I'm very concerned about that, and I would say that the emergency declarations we've made, I believe they've turned into opportunities for FEMA loans, SBA loans, that people need to be aware of if they did have damage and they live in Sedgwick County, damage as a result of the heavy rains. We've had at least two events that qualified for potential assistance from FEMA. So I'd like to encourage them to contact 211 and ask them questions, contact the county, and we can help get them in touch with people who have the information they need. Plus, there's a law that passed in 2014 that allows them to abate some of the property taxes if they're qualified, and so they need to make that application for that assistance if that's what they want to do. So there are some things we're trying to do to help out, and we're certainly sensitive and am trying to find ways to help people that are certainly suffering. I talked to someone just yesterday. They've lived in this house for decades, have never had a problem. Now they've got water seeping into their basement through the concrete because the water table is just so high. And they've got 24/7 people in their home trying to manage the water coming into their basement. So this is still going on. It hasn't gotten any better for, even though we haven't had as much rain in the last few days, the last week, the problem is still continuing. And so I'm very sensitive and empathetic. I have empathy towards those that are going through this very challenging time. So I agree with Commissioner Norton, and we just need to have this conversation. So appreciate you bringing that up. Commissioner Norton, I think you have other comments.
Just a couple. One, we've instigated pumping the Derby Water Wells that are on the west side of the river, and that's brought a lot of the groundwater down and has mitigated part of that. That's very unusual that you'd have to do that. We did it, I think, in 2008, and it gave us some people some relief. But we're going to have to think about that as part of the infrastructure, too, of how we maybe look forward and have that in our toolbox constantly with the Division of Water Resources instead of having to go through permitting and asking and how many gallons of flow we can do. We need to figure out how that can be something that we can automatically use when the groundwater comes up in some of those areas that are so prone to that. The second thing is, when we talk about the townships, yes, it's in the year, they're about out of money. There are some roads that are in terrible shape. I drove yesterday, and there's some roads where the aggregate and the sand is more in the ditch than it is on the roadbed. It's just water coming across the road has just pushed it in there. And it's going to take a while for them to dig the ditches out, and I think they're going to need some help with some products, some aggregate to repair some of those roads. In some cases, the channeling that's run down the middle of the road or across the road is just eating out the whole base. And it's going to be very tough for some of the townships to get that repaired. So we need to think about how we help that, mitigate that, partner with the townships at the end of the year. I don't know what kind of arrangements can be made, but we have the access to product that they don't, and maybe we help them out in some manner. I don't know what that looks like. It can be in a conversation on Tuesday, but I think we certainly need to have that. If the township roads aren't repaired, it's a safety issue for all our citizens, and it pushes traffic to other roads and starts hurting them. If people start naturally detouring away from a road, it may tear up another road that has not taken much traffic in some cases over the years, and it just exacerbates the whole infrastructure problem that we have. So I think we need to just be sure that we're talking about it, maybe have a staff meeting or a special meeting of some sort to be sure that we really understand the issues. And I know a lot of it is housed in my district and Commissioner Howell's district, but I think, you know, I think Carl's had some issues with some township roads. He certainly has a lot of them. The water was, a lot of the water was south of Kellogg, but if you get up into the Calfskin and the Cowskin Basin, there was some major problems up in there, too. More drainage and flooding and stormwater than roads, but still problems in our community. So I just think we need to be having a very rich, robust conversation about this issue and how it affects the safety and the health and welfare of our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I think one of the challenges, of course, is to keep interest on this when we're not in the middle of a flood event. The issues of water, whether it's drought or plenty water, we seem to, the conversation seems to follow whatever event happens to be going on at the moment, and it's hard to keep the conversation going when we're not in those moments. And so, anyway, good comments, Commissioner Norton. Appreciate those. Commissioner Peter John?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to kind of segue on your comments and Commissioner Norton's comments because obviously I've got more township mileage in my district in terms of township roads than any other commissioner. In fact, I think probably I could add up several commissioner districts, but I was told very, a number of years ago by a very smart fellow, that each of these weather events are unique in and of themselves. And I think back to the worst event that I can recall, back, the Halloween flood in 1998, which occurred far enough back that there are a lot of folks that that's not on their radar screen, but I think it affected a much larger area and in some ways was just as devastating to the folks who were impacted back then as the folks who've been impacted this month and last month in the south part of the county. And when we talk about the impact of these events, it gets into a variety of questions in terms of where the responsibility needs to lie in terms of taking care of these township roads and where ultimately we're going to be, the ultimate responsibility will lie. I know the Public Works Stream Maintenance Group does a tremendous job with limited resources, and we've got to, we're going to have to revisit, I think, on a regular basis like any other county function, all that we have out there to do. And I would add that the Cowskin and its tributaries, the Calfskin and Dry Creek, not to be confused with the Dry Creek that's both in Commissioner Norton and in my district and south of K-42. Actually, there's three Dry Creeks in Sedgwick County, so if somebody says we've got a drainage problem with Dry Creek, I automatically have to get more information because that's often a challenge, especially if we have a widespread rain event, knowing which one of my, which one of the Dry Creeks is causing a problem this time. But having said that, the challenge we have before us, it's multifaceted. If pumping out wells in Derby helps with some groundwater or flooding problems in that area in the county, we've got wells all over the county, and this looks at a broader issue in terms of what we can do to mitigate, and we need some, frankly, professional engineering. And I'm going to be looking to Mr. Spears and the folks in Public Works to provide us Public Works to provide us with the expertise, because if we get in a situation where pumping out water wells is a, is a possible tool to improve the drainage flood, flooding problems that we're seeing, this is going to get into some fairly technical areas, and it's something we need to approach cautiously, carefully, and having the input from people with a lot more expertise than I feel like I have, although my time up here is going to be relatively brief going forward, this issue is going to be a continuing challenge for, I think, all five commissioners, and so I appreciate the opportunity to kind of add to the remarks that have already been made. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Peter John. Any final comments before we adjourn this meeting? Any Commissioners? How about staff? Mr. Manager, anything else for today's meeting that you'd like to bring up? Mr. Counselor? All right.